This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the September 13, 2018 Meeting of the North Haven Board of Education to order at approximately 6:30 PM. Tonight, especially to the Board of Ed members, I'd like to make an introduction to our new Board Council, Jessica Ritter. As many of you know, after a number of years working with the North Haven Board of Ed and a number of other school districts, Gary Burchew is pursuing work in the nonprofit sector. We wish him well, and we thank him for his guidance over the years. In Gary's place, Shipman &amp; Goodman has assigned Jessica Ritter, who has experienced educational attorney to work with North Haven. Jessica's here this evening, so I can introduce her to the Board. Welcome, Jennifer.
Jessica, thank you.
Jessica, I'm sorry. Jen, welcome. Jessica's over there.
Nice to meet you all.
Thank you.
And this is my colleague Thad Bouchain, also from Shipman &amp; Goodman.
Hi, Ruth.
Thank you both. Look forward to working with you all.
Yeah, we've already started working on some things, and it's been very nice, so thank you. First item is our consent agenda. Did everyone have a chance to review?
Yeah.
The consent agenda. Okay, may I have a motion to approve... I'm sorry, I was writing behind you. I was reading. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Second? Second?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I need to abstain, right? Because I wasn't present for the meeting, so I should have remarked this on the right?
Right, I guess that would be right. So hashtag individuals?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Dot?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
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 What?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, Tim? Welcome to your first of the year student report.
As a senior.
As a senior.
Yeah.
Yeah, how's that feel, Tim?
I guess I feel older.
Fine.
So a smooth start to the school year. Sports are having their first games in the first week... in the first few weeks of school. North Haven football defeated West Haven last Friday. Your books are on sale now on October 28 to 31. And North Haven High School will get a visit from the NESCDS, which is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. There'll also be a drone that will be flown around North Haven High School to capture the school. There's also an autism walkathon at the North Haven Middle School. That's on Sunday, next Sunday, I believe, September 30, from 8 to 10 AM. And there's also an EpiPen in the AED compartment located near the athletic director's office.
There's something new. Great. Okay. You looking forward to this year, Tim?
Yeah, senior year.
Yeah. Good.
The high school is going through, as Tim said, the high school's going through their accreditation this year. So they will be... The New England Association of Schools and Colleges will be on-site at the end of October. We have submitted all of the paperwork. The schools have been working on it for over a year. Everything has been submitted, so now it will be the site visit.
Okay. So for me, I just want to start saying welcome to everyone back to a new school year. Welcome to our teachers and administrators and everyone else. But I wanted to talk to the Board briefly and to the public so they know. As we all know, Dr. Cronin has handed in his retirement at the end of this year. And we've been starting our superintendent search. So how that worked out was we hired a consultant to be working with the Board, Dr. Joseph Erardi. He's going to be working with the Board. And he has put together some timing for us. So I'm just going to go over that right now with the Board, so we all have an idea of what's happening and what's expected. First thing that we're going to do is on Thursday, September 27, we have a Board of Education special meeting to...
Did you say September? I'm sorry.
Yes, September 27. Starting at 70... To discuss all of the hiring processes for the position of the superintendent of schools. I believe that's an executive session meeting. Is that correct?
It is. It's a hiring committee.
Yes, a hiring committee meeting. And I... Last Board of Ed meeting, I appointed the Board as the hiring committee. So from September 15 through November 2 is the application process, which will be advertised locally, regionally, and then throughout the nation. From September 15 through November 2, we're going to have community surveys, which will be posted in the North Haven Public School website with all the information that we get from the public and what they're looking for, what they see would be a good idea in a superintendent. We'll get all of that information, and we'll put it into a community profile. Then we're going to have, also in that timeframe, from September 15 to November 2, we're going to have focus meetings to be held with teachers, staff, and PTA participants from every school. And in addition, focus meetings are also going to be held for key elected and appointed officials. And there will be two... And along with this timeline, there will be two additional evening meetings held for community members to share their thoughts and opinions on the skill set needed to be a successful North Haven education leader. And then on November 8, Dr. Erardi will attend the Board of Ed regularly scheduled meeting, and will present the community profile per all the data that was collected from the meetings and the survey, and present to us what people are looking for to get their idea. And then between November 12 and 23, all interviews will start taking place with the selected candidates and with the hiring committee. So I just wanted to let everyone know what was happening, what that process was happening. I've been asked... A couple of people have asked me outside of this, because this is where we're going. And I think when you all meet Joe, Dot and I were really impressed, and I'll be happy to work with them.
The dates again for the interview period?
November 12 through 23. And our first meeting... Our meeting with him is Thursday, September 27 at 7 o'clock.
Do you have those dates for the community meetings yet?
I do.
Didn't I just do them at the library?
October 2 and October 24, I believe, were the community meetings.
Yeah, at the North Haven Middle School library. I do have them here, but I have them. Okay. Any other comments on that, Paul or Jesse? Do we have any unfinished business from last week that we need... Last meeting that we need to bring up? Okay. Then let's go to any new business.
I have new business I'd like to bring forward. I'd like to talk about the lack of air conditioning in the elementary schools. Sit back and relax. I have a few things to say.
Well, it's nice and cool in here. Hopefully, well.
Yes. You know, 15 years ago, everybody was in the same situation. There were six buildings. We were all flat roofs, tar roofs, with areas in the buildings that were air-conditioned. Mostly the office, the nurses' room, the library, the computer lab. Things have changed considerably in the last 15 years. One, we have two new buildings that are completely air-conditioned. Two, the security is so tight now that on the elementary level, before, we could open the doors to the outside. You know, at night, the windows would be open, and the custodians would close them before they'd go home. We can't do that anymore. And three, there's an increase in asthma among adults and children. Plus, we have a few medically fragile children in our district. Having taught in all four elementary buildings at some time, I asked Dr. Cronin if I could walk the buildings Tuesday and Thursday after Labor Day, because I know how uncomfortable they can be, especially in the morning of the buildings that face the eastern sun, and then in the afternoon, the ones that face west. And he said, "Go ahead." And I went in. I did two buildings on Tuesday and two buildings on Thursday. I have to say, I was very impressed by the principals' planning. They were rotating the different classrooms through cooling centers. I was very impressed with the nurses. They were out and about checking on kids. Because even at 10 o'clock, it was starting to get hot. And it just got hotter as the morning went on. I was very pleased with what I saw with the teachers. They were doing quiet activity. Some of them were in the hallway reading with kids, because the hallways are definitely cooler. We had... I saw teachers with lights off, and they had the smart boards, and they were doing a group lesson. And they were really watching the students. And I know for the elementary teachers, this is a very difficult time for them, because they're trying to establish classroom routines. And that's hard when you're out of the classroom, in the hallway, in different buildings. I thought they were really troopers, really nice, you know, pleasant. And the kids... Some of them looked a little bit flushed at 10 o'clock. I was concerned about a couple. And... But I knew the nurse was walking around. They all had water bottles. Okay? So, you know, I... Well, it was hot. I couldn't wait to leave, very honestly. But, I mean, it was a pleasant visit. But there were some things that I really need help in understanding. I went into the four cafeterias, and my heart went out to the cafeteria ladies. They have the ovens on. Now, why we have to... I'd like to really know why we have to serve hot lunch during a heat wave. What the ovens are blasting, and all they have is one fan that is, you know, going around and around, moving the hot air. They... One of them really didn't look very good. I was concerned about. And this was 10:30, 11 o'clock in the morning. She said she even went in early to get the food cooked, to put it in the warmers. So is there any way we can talk to Chartwells? Because it's not their... It's not the cafeteria lady's decision. It comes from Chartwells, the manager. That we know at the beginning of the year, usually there's a week or two that's hot. And also at the end of the year. At the end of the year, they usually plan hot lunches. I mean, I'm sorry, bag lunches. And I'd like to see the flexibility of doing that with, you know, at the beginning of the year. I mean, because heat waves don't come up all of a sudden. We knew about this the week before. As I was walking down the hallways, I was kind of peeking into the rooms. I didn't want to disturb instructions, so I was just peeking. And I noticed some of the rooms, they all seemed to have, not all of them, but some of them had white fans that were about three feet tall. They all looked uniform. And I asked, and they said, "Oh, the different PTAs had donated to the classrooms." However, what I was noticing is that, you know, over here was a box fan, and over here, there was another fan, and it didn't match, and whatever. And I asked these teachers, and they said, "Oh, they're bringing fans in from home. They're going to Walmart to buy fans. They're picking them up at tag sales." You know what? I didn't know our district was a BYOF, Bring Your Own Fan. I really... And then I asked one teacher who did not have a fan, who was in the eastern part, and I said, "Well, you don't have a fan." She said, "I asked one for one last year, and I was told we didn't have any money." So I'm requesting that when you're building our budget, that we take a look and make sure that teachers have fans. Again, it's hot, humid, but at least it's moving the air around. Okay? So... And I also want to go back, and I talked to Dr. Cronin about this a couple of times, and it's a sticking point with me. When we were at the middle... When I was at the middle school, which, again, it was six years ago, but we were all given a fan that was donated by the PTA. It was four feet tall. It was black. It was on a big stand, and it had wheels. They were used in all the classrooms. I assumed that once the construction at the middle school was finished, they would just be passed down to the elementary schools. I didn't see one of them in any of the buildings. Does anybody know what happened to those fans?
Had you already spoke to Dr. Cronin about this? And you're asking him again?
Yeah.
So maybe we'll just talk to Phil. I wanted to find that out.
Well, I didn't ask him. I mentioned it. You know, I... Yeah.
But you wanted to.
I really... You know what? Because there was five teachers on a team, three teams, three grades. Don't multiply. That's a lot of fans. And I'll tell you very honestly, when you're talking, you had to talk loud, because they were big. But they moved the air. And I would just like to know where they are, or what happened to them. I don't know how 45 fans can disappear, because we could really use them on the elementary level. The last thing is, you know, those are little distractions. But I'm really concerned about the picture. And I know that richer fitting, probably the four elementary schools, would be very expensive. But I know nothing about air conditioning and electric panels. Is there any way that we could talk with somebody that they could give an estimate of how much it would cost to do each building? And if it's cost prohibitive, to talk about doing larger areas like the gym or the cafeteria, where you can put groups of kids in to do group activities? And at least, you know, they would be in air conditioning. Because right now, as the principals are moving kids through air conditioning, cooling centers, it's limited. They only have two or three choices. If you do some big rooms, then we had a possibility of putting more kids in for a longer period of time. So I'm just wondering if...
Well, we would have to hire... And we've had discussions. We would have to hire a consultant, and we have kind of talked about that, because we understand the heat and how hot it was, which usually doesn't get that... I think we think that you have to see what we can do, but we would have to hire a consultant. And I've asked Mr. Diana to take a look into that, and we'll see if we can find the funds, because a consultant would probably be between $10,000 and $15,000 to take a look at the schools.
Because in reality, our climate is changing. And I don't see this getting better. I just see the... Because this is, I think, the third straight year in a row. And I can remember that.
The other thing we can look into, and that's the beginning of the school year, when we do our calendar next year. We can't change the date, because we go on the ACES calendar. But perhaps we can work on doing the first few days of school. The first week of school is half a day. People do not have to plan for their daycare, because I know how frustrating. And that was one of Dr. Cronin's concerns. When he called me, was for parents with daycare. He was very, very concerned about that. But maybe that's something when we do our calendar, we can look at, just as we do it at the end of the year, because of other reasons. Maybe we can do some half-days at the elementary schools at the beginning of the year.
But my problem is, I still say it's inequitable. You have middle school and high school students that are having an interrupted day. They're being educated in their homerooms. They're not being disruptive. I'm not disrupted, disrupted. In middle school, their education was not... Their start to the school, even though the teachers were doing a great job, it's not the same. The early childhood kids came in on a Friday. They didn't... They had Labor Day off, and then the ones in the afternoon didn't have class Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. These are little three- to five-year-old students with special needs. They need the routine, you know? So that's really... I really want to... You know what happens? It gets hot for a couple of days, then it cools, and everybody forgets about it. And then it gets hot at the end of the year. Then everybody goes home. And then we're just repeating the process time and time again. And I just want to see if we can do something constructive.
Well, alone with other school districts.
Well, we're not alone.
There's someone that's going through the same thing. We're not alone with it. And it is the finances for the air conditioning in the elementary schools. I feel what we did this year was very, very good. I know how much thought went into it.
Oh, I know. It's not a criticism of the school system. You know, with the personality, you're doing the best you can. But this is the situation. And, I mean, are there funds out there on the federal, state level? Local legislators, can they help us with infrastructure? I don't know. I'm just asking the question that we discuss this further.
I can ask... Also ask Mr. Diana to attend the October Board meeting, and we can pick up the conversation in terms of the consultant. And I will try to get the answer to you, Dot, about... Or for you, about what happened to the fans.
They may have been old, too. Or whatever. Well, we'll talk about it for there. I mean, maybe some of them got discarded. Maybe some got donated.
Yeah, you know what? The sources... Well, they were being stored, because we would have them every summer, you know, every September. Then they would go away, and then we'd see them again in May. So I don't know where they were being stored. Now, you're right. They were probably 10 years old at this point. But they were such heavy duty that most of them were in decent condition. And I know they were being used in C-Hall during the last phase of construction. So, again, they were donated by the middle school PTA, I believe. And you know what? I think we should have the answer what happened to them.
Can I just ask a quick question about this? Have we done a similar sizing exercise for the four elementary schools, or for the middle school, or the high school in like the past decade, maybe? Just because I'm just looking to get, obviously not an exact quote, but just, is it hundreds of thousands? Is it millions? You know, do we have any kind of sizing available?
A couple of years back, I know the question came out from another parent. And at that time, Mr. Diana had some information. I don't want to misquote it, so I'll ask him to bring that with him in October, so that he can... I know that he had done some preliminary work on it. So we'll get that for you.
And I just want to say really quickly, I just want to echo Dot's sentiment that I think you guys did a fantastic job. It was a really difficult situation. I have children in the schools, and it was very thoughtfully done. My children did get very hot, and they came home sticky and messy. But I do think that under the circumstances, I was happy with the thoughtful measure with which it was executed.
It was probably one of the decisions that I angst over the most of all the decisions I've had to make. And I've been making weather decisions for a long time. But it was the start of a new school year. The first two days, I was concerned about buses, and would buses have their routes down so that we could get people out early and then get them back for the elementary? The second week, I was really concerned about childcare, especially since I knew that we couldn't dismiss middle and high. It would be... Make no sense. But then, when I just, as I followed the weather, and it was just going to be, you know, so oppressive, I thought that parents would have... Would find a way. And they did, you know, fortunately. But it was... It was really... Labor Day weekend was a long weekend of trying to decide what to do the next week.
And that's... Now, when the billing is shut up for, you know, Labor Day, and then Tuesday, and the heat builds in the building. And so by the time, you know, you're the second, the third day, it's just worse and worse.
Thank you. I read that. I'll follow that up.
I don't mean to belabor the point, but I did... I've probably been asked this question 20, 25 times in the last couple of days. My parents, Green Acres had its open house earlier this week, and I was there, and like every time I turned around, somebody was asking me the same question. And they asked me to bring it up. And so I agree, and Dot and I haven't spoken about this at all. A lot of the things that she mentioned were questions that I got from parents. Specifically, people were asking, "Why are the elementary schools not air-conditioned as opposed to the two newer schools?" And a lot of parents said, "It's probably too cost prohibitive to do that." But they did ask me, and I find this coincidence funny, because Dot just mentioned it. They said, "Well, if we can't air-condition an entire school, maybe we can think about putting some in just some of the larger spaces in the school and rotate kids through there." So, like I said, I don't want to belabor the point. I just... People asked me to bring it up, so I feel like I should. And I do, you know, my wife and I included have kids in the elementary school and had a plan accordingly. But I think it was the right decision, especially when my kids came home and were telling me how hot it was there. I think it was the right decision that you made. And again, I think all the elementary school principals did a very good job of... You know, my kids were all excited that they got to go into the teacher's lounge as I had to go to the police station. So it was, I think, best-case scenario. It was worked out as best it could.
And the unfortunate thing before we move on is we can't put in window air conditioners.
Right.
For safety reasons, you can't have an air conditioner in a window.
And we had tried one summer, the floor models. And we bought them for summer school. And they really were very poor, of very poor quality. And they really weren't... I don't know if they weren't made for the size of the room that they were trying to cool off or what. But it didn't do what we had hoped.
Okay. Okay. Next, we'll go into our reports of standing committee. And you're up first, Dot.
I'll be a lot faster this time. We had our first meeting today of the ACES governing body. There was a recognition of staff for the Teacher of the Year and different teachers and staff members. Again, it's a typical beginning-of-the-year meeting, where they talked about the audit completion. They talked about the status of the International Education. They sent five teachers to China. And they're certified in fine arts. And some will be there for semesters, some will be there for a full year.
To China?
To China. And it's going well. I guess everybody's very happy. Although, the next thing was the status of the Leader Hill Construction was delayed due to steel.
Yeah. The tariffs.
Yeah.
The new tariff.
Yeah. Maybe when they come back from China, they can bring some steel.
Sneak it in. You just got the joke.
And then the last thing was, they spoke about the new brokerage service for Special Education Transportation. We're one of the eight districts. And it's going well. And some of the bids are coming in even lower than they anticipated. So there should be some cost savings there.
That's... I don't know if... Frank has gotten many calls from out-of-district transportation. I've not gotten any in my office. You've gotten a few.
A few.
But I think that in the... Once they get it ironed out, I think it will really benefit all districts.
Well, actually, I know that some of the parents were very anxious because they didn't have the time of pickup the day before. Now they have somebody, I think Linda, who's a real go-getter. And I think as time goes on, it will just get smoother and smoother.
Good.
Thank you. Curriculum instruction and planning?
Yeah, we met on the 3rd. We had guests from each... The principals from each of the elementary schools. This is what was Dana Korovov there. Dana reported to the group about an initiative to combine transportation for the students, which is what you just mentioned. And yes, we also talked about the communication issue that you mentioned. So I guess that will hopefully be worked out. She discussed a proposal for a new curriculum, second step, which is centered around the promotion of social and emotional learning. And is that provided by or designed by CASL, or what is...
It has the CASL standards. It has the...
Okay, so that's the collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning. We weren't sure with that, Matt.
The hope is that we'll find some funding to be able to bring it in. We'd like to bring it in really globally if we can afford it. So Dana's working on that.
Yeah, we talked about phasing it in if we had to, a couple of grades at a time. As I said, the elementary school principals joined us to provide their perspective on nature's classroom. And the date... Nature's Classroom and the day trips that were taking place simultaneously. There was general agreement that the biggest challenges was in fact the fact that they were running both programs at the same time. There were of course other difficulties presented by the tornado for the day trips. Of the two programs, the day program presented the greatest challenge because, challenge to organize and also to keep the trips to the length of the school day was also difficult. Nature's Classroom presented less of an organizational challenge because there's, once the students arrive, there they are, so that's, that's a little bit less cumbersome. And for what it's worth, the difference in cost was about $100 less for the day trips altogether. So unanimous recommendations for moving forward included more adult presence and this is challenging because there's understandable hesitation among the staff to commit entire week away from home and some of our staff is younger than they were and so they have young families and they're less likely to, to want to do that. So we spent some time discussing different models, things like shorter length, things like local facilities, things like breaking the program up into two days at home and two days away. And there's going to be a general polling of parents at the open house as well as further discussion to determine staff interest. That's what I got.
You've got it.
Have you thought about opening it up to the system? You know, teachers throughout the system that would be willing to go and then possibly?
Some places we do have, not the fifth grade teacher go, but other person.
Oh, okay.
Brian, finance and operations?
Finance and operations met earlier this evening. I'd like to introduce Frank Connolly, who's our interim business manager. He's been with us six weeks now?
No, starting the 5th.
Starting the 5th, starting the 5th, so getting a little aggressive there. So what he's been doing was, at the time that he came on board, he had to do some filings, state filings that were due September 1st, they're all filed to avoid penalty. And now he's just getting comfortable with the numbers and reworking budgets and make it more user friendly for us. And that's what we've discussed at finance and operations.
Okay, thank you. Middle school building committee?
We haven't met yet.
Yeah, no, it's all right, thank you. North Haven Education Foundation?
Unfortunately, with all the personal family stuff that's been going on, I've missed the last several meetings, so.
Do you have anything?
It was really, yesterday was more of an organizational meeting to start the new year. The, they talked about each of their subcommittees, you know, there's always a great focus on the spelling bee because that is so critical to them. And what they're really hoping for is more corporate sponsorship of the, of the spelling bee, would you say, Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah, because that is where the, where they make their best resources is through corporate sponsorship. So if anybody knows of companies or corporations that might be interested in being a sponsor of the spelling bee, please let us know and we can pursue that.
I understand they're also expecting you to come out of retirement.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, that, the wig was a turning point. I did tell, I tell teachers at convocation though, if I can wear a wig, you can get up and spell a few words.
Thank you. Policy, there was a couple of policies in your packet this week, so we will come up to vote on those shortly and then we have another policy that is first draft, the first review that we can take a look at too. Just so that we're working on policies, also looking at a lot of what shipment has too. So we'll go to those. PTA council?
Our first meeting is the 26th, so I will have a report ready after that.
Okay, can you let them, the 26th of September?
September.
Let them know, I'll give you those dates again, and I know that Joe is going to contact through Joyce of PTA, but maybe I'll get some stuff for you that you can bring up to them at the meeting.
That'd be great.
Thanks, Amanda. Randy, ad hoc?
We, I had to cancel unfortunately for a personal reason, so we scheduled for, we rescheduled for September 25th at 6 o'clock.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
And did you want to?
No, he had to step out, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is he coming back?
I don't know.
Okay, sure. Okay. Okay, so with that, may I have a motion to approve all standing committee reports? So moved.
Certainly.
All in favor? Aye. Dr. Price?
Sure, thank you. A number of things tonight. So everyone has had an opportunity now to do the second read of the acceptable use policy and I'm wondering if we're prepared to vote tonight so that we can adopt that and if so, could we move that forward?
So let's go here, may I have a motion to approve the acceptable, acceptable use policy? So moved. Second. Any further discussion, more questions? All in favor? Any opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. And you also had time to review again the district homework policy and if there are any questions, I certainly will answer those, but if, if not, if we can have a motion to adopt that as well, it would be helpful.
May I have a motion for the homework policy? So moved. Second. Any further discussion? The only thing I'd like to say is I know that it was worked on very hard by teachers, administrator, a few parents to come up with this policy and I think we did a really good job on it. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Sticking with the policy theme, in your packets this month is the first read for the restraint and seclusion policy. And that's one that all districts are asked to develop, it's by statute. Dana Corovo worked very closely with Jessica Ritter and on developing that so that we're sure that we're meeting all of the conditions of the, of the law and it's based on, actually, it is based on regulations that were just approved this summer, so it is the most recent. So as you look at that, do you have any questions about that at this point?
I do, if that's okay.
Sure.
So I realize that the supernumeraries are not technically employed by the Board of Education, but there is language within this policy that, you know, defines a school employee and defines who's working in close proximity to students. I'm wondering if that the supernumeraries were omitted intentionally or if we should maybe include some light language to just avoid confusion? I'm not saying that we should create a policy for them, but just for the sake of clarity around what to do in like a life threatening situation, my assumption would be that one of the SROs would be brought in to help with that and I think that should just be clear within the legal language.
Are they trained in restraint and seclusion? Because you have to be trained. Is that one of their, is that part of their training?
No, that was.
No, so they wouldn't be able to?
So if there's a life threatening.
Life threatening is different.
Yeah, because that, there is language in here for like life threatening.
Right.
Situations and the supernumeraries are not included in that line, I just want to make sure that we're, we're covering ourselves there.
So I will talk with Dana about adding into there some mention of in life threatening situations, mentioning supernumeraries as being a part of that. Because I think in their responsibilities, it's listed that.
It is.
Yeah.
And do we, is the, are the supernumeraries, are they considered part of the crisis intervention team or are they separate?
Yes, actually, I've got a report on them to give you an update that Patrick provided me with and I, part of it was that they are part of the crisis team.
Perfect, because there's language in, in the policy about the crisis team as well, so I think we should probably just include them if that's the plan.
So we'll do a second read and then we'll vote next month on this restraint and seclusion.
We'll come back with the changes that we want to add to it.
Yes, I will. When I, when we send it out, we'll have those changes in it. And then I just want to mention to you that we have, next month you'll also receive two additional policies that Dana has been working on with council. One is on our 504 policy for students and employees and the other is on the food allergy management policy. And she, we are, our policies are current and they are fine. What, what's happened unfortunately is that the Office of Civil Rights has set a threshold that's higher, which is good. But they are four years behind in providing districts with feedback to their policies. So our policies were submitted four years ago, we've now gotten feedback about what we need to do in order to raise them to the Office of Civil Rights level and we're working on doing that. So I would ask on that one if you could, if there's any way that we could do, or I don't know if it's possible to do a read and to vote on the next time, vote on it the next time or if we really do need the two reads.
I think we do need the two reads.
Yeah, I know. Okay. That's fine.
But you know, if you want to, we can talk about, we do have a special meeting.
On the 27th.
That maybe we can.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, let's check that, we can do it on the 27th. And then we can vote on the October meeting, which I know I postponed by a day or a week, I forget which one, a week.
Okay, I will, that's a great idea. Thank you.
We have them occasionally.
Yes.
Sometimes she gets lucky.
So included in your packets also was a proposed protocol for use of the artificial turf field, the heat presented, some challenges there as well, not unexpected. So I'd like to talk about the protocol with you. It's, it is a draft and that's part of the purpose of our discussion. And Mr. Blumenthal, Blumenthal is here this evening, so if you have questions, he's also available to answer them. So, Amanda?
Do you have questions?
Yeah.
So I read through the proposal and it's substantively different from what we had seen previously in like CIAC tournament standards. And that's not to say that, that those are the be all and all, but I did some additional research and in Connecticut, there's the Corey Stringer Institute at UConn, which is named after Minnesota Vikings defensive lineman who died of heat stroke in 2001. They offer some pretty robust guidelines as well as the National Athletic Trainers Association and they offer guidelines that are in line with the CIAC guidelines. Our guidelines that are proposed allow play at significantly warmer temperatures than the other guidelines that I've seen. So I'm just wondering if I can get some clarity around, you know, some of the thought process behind allowing the higher temperature and just a little bit of any kind of medical information that would go to support being able to play at higher temperatures safely.
Sure. Before, before we speak to that, can, can I have the first, the UConn?
Yes, it is the Corey with a K, so K-O-R-E-Y, Stringer Institute, which is at UConn. And they focus on preventable athletic deaths.
If I could just add something to that, I didn't do any research, but as I read through this, I nonetheless felt that maybe these temperatures seemed high to me. So that, you know, just to back up what you said, without research.
Just to make, not giving my opinion on what this is, but we canceled sports on our fields last week, on our fields, but our teams played and others had.
They did.
Had games at other schools. So we canceled it, but they were allowed, they were, they played elsewhere. It's just something I want everyone to have as a little food for thought and I know all of this is coming about because we have our new synthetic fields. So people are, are very, very concerned about it, but they did play at other fields, so other school districts have looked at, I don't know what the times were, if it was evening or not, but that's just something I want everyone to know about as we make these decisions and look at, look on the heat. And, you know, Steve, I think this is a good time and a good opportunity for you to talk to the board about where some of this came from, as well as also, I think it's important that the board knows about the training that our staff, our, our coaches get. I think, I know about two weeks ago, you, there was some training on working in the heat, et cetera, so I'll have you work on it.
Yeah, on August 27th, we had a CPR first aid.
Steve, could you go to the microphone, please?
So on August 27th, was the, right after the season began, we had a coaches preseason meeting for all of our fall coaches and we had a CPR first aid and AED recertification. It also included the heat training. Sally Marr was our trainer and again, anyone that was there could not, they had already been certified, it was a recertification. The certification process is a much longer, lengthier process, so this was just a recert. But all the coaches there had already been certified, it was a refresher, we talked about the heat. We, of course, had an anticipation that there was going to be heat issues during the beginning of the season. And I, I do have to add that all of our coaches were extremely responsible throughout the heat wave. We, most practices were pushed to later in the day, after 6 o'clock, whether it was on grass or on turf, there were very few practices that occurred right after school or even, you know, up to 6 o'clock. So that was a relief. Also, I should add that there was absolutely no issues whatsoever with any of our student athletes. There was not one report of, you know, heat stroke or heat illness and so that was of course a relief for, for the coaches and of course for myself. These, these guidelines were taken primarily from other SEC schools. We are in the Southern Connecticut Conference and so that's where I got it from. That included Wallingford, I believe Milford, I don't, I know I didn't put it on here because we, you know, were proposing it as a North Haven protocol. So there were, you know, other guidelines that we kind of adopted from. I don't know if that covers everything that was asked.
I know you and I talked about the CIAC policy. We had originally said the board was going to follow that and then you had spoke to the CIAC, correct?
Yeah, I, I don't have the quote in front of me, but they don't have a specific guideline, but they did refer to Corey Stringer, which I, I did a lot of research on the Corey Stringer site and Amanda, maybe I didn't find what you found, so if you wouldn't mind, I would love to see.
Yeah, sure.
What you said, just because I didn't see any specific guidelines from, from my research and maybe I still wasn't doing the right search. But there was a lot of information on the Corey Stringer website, I just didn't see any, anything similar to this that had the actual specifics of the certain situations. We also wanted to use a, the data that was already there, so like using like an app like Weatherbug or weather.com as opposed to ourselves, me or the athletic trainer going to take the measurements, because we didn't want that to be misconstrued as, you know, I, you know, it read 102 and I said it was 92. So we, we wanted to leave it to the experts who were telling us what the, either the heat index is or feels like as through weather.com. We have a weather service that we use, we get information from, I actually used John Bagioni, who is our, our weather expert who sends an email to whoever's, you know, subscribed to the service. So he actually communicated with me directly so I could get some of his thoughts and I also use his ideas as opposed, as part of developing this protocol.
Steve, quick question. If an athlete's parent decides that for whatever reason, their child should not participate on a day when they've deemed it to be too hot, is that athlete there then penalized?
Not at all.
Okay, because I want to make sure, you know, there might be a kid who has asthma and he's like, ma, everybody else is going to the practice, I'm going to be benched if I don't go and the parent is concerned, I just want to make sure that coaches are aware that that is not okay, that you can't bench a kid if their parent pulls.
You are absolutely correct and I want to reiterate that our coaches were extremely careful and considerate and responsible of our student athletes. They realized that these are students, teenagers who are, you know, in school, maybe not hydrated because they've been in school all day and they're, they're teenagers, so they may not be drinking water and, or electrolytes on a regular basis. So they're getting out into the sun, into the heat and it's, you know, very possible that they could be, you know, already dehydrated. You can walk around dehydrated and, and some of our students could be in that situation. So, so they were. So they were, you know, taking many breaks, you know, really not doing, I mean, there were days that there was just walkthroughs. There was no, especially during the heat wave, there was no conditioning going on. There was no sprinting, there was no, for a lot of those days, there was no pads for football, no equipment even for field hockey, where a goalie wears a full, you know, a full outfit of equipment. There was none of that, because that would just make it even hotter for those students. So definitely, they can, you know, opt out. And if any of those coaches saw anyone, and I communicated with them directly on a daily basis, they would say, before the kid would even say, "I'm out," the coach would say, "You need to get into shape."
Good. That's great.
So.
Okay. So Steve, if you can talk with Amanda about the things that you think you missed, and if there's anything that needs to be added to this draft, just let us know.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Steve, can I ask you one question?
Sure.
About, without commenting on the temperatures and stuff like that, there seems like, under all the temperatures, there's a lot of discretion afforded to the coaches, like optional water breaks, or, you know, they should be able to take in as much water as desire, optional water breaks, things like that. Is there a reason why it's discretionary to the coaches instead of, if we're at this, they need to take a water break every 30 minutes, or they have to, you know, every 30 minutes or, you know, take a 10-minute break? Why is it discretionary instead of mandatory?
I think it's more because I took it directly from what some of the other schools had, and I didn't, I didn't question. I just kind of like, just took that and said, "Okay, we can do that, but of course, we can change it."
No, I would just, just curious. I mean, I understand our coaches are getting, or our whole department's getting trained, they're recertified, so they should be keying up on these things and being able to pick people out. I'm just curious if there was a reason it was discretionary. Because I know the hotter it gets, and it stops, the discretion stops.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And can I just ask another question? I know that you said you're using apps for the heat index, which I think is great to rely on, professionals, that's excellent. But we do know, based on some of the data that was delivered to us, and thank you for delivering the data, that the artificial turf fields do get substantively hotter than other fields. So are we exercising a different set of guidelines for turf fields, or are we treating the heat index on top of the turf fields, which may be 20, 30 degrees hotter than grass fields? Are we treating them separately as part of this?
I did not write two different protocols.
I wouldn't expect you to.
No, I mean, if that's something that the board is looking to do, then we can do that. But, I mean, yes, it is substantively hotter. I do have to say that even though it's hotter, I was on the turf when it was hot on those days, and I actually took my shoes off. And, you know, I wasn't playing, and I wasn't on there for that long, but you couldn't really, you could tell there was a difference, but it wasn't like my feet were burning. Not to say that that's, you know, scientific, you know, test. And then I went out there a couple of other days where I spoke to the players who were on the turf, and I said, you know, "How do you feel? You know, how does it feel to play on the turf, you know, as far as, you know, their feet, you know, were their feet burning? Do they need to take a break at that point?" And they seemed to be fine. And that was without a coach present. I mean, the coach was there, but I was talking to them directly. So they didn't feel pressure to say something that maybe they wouldn't have said if the coach was present.
Sure. So I think my question is more, there's a 10-degree differential within the heat policy. So it's completely possible that the heat index on the grass fields is 92 degrees, and then on the turf, we're at 120, or something. I'm using it for instance, that's not exact numbers. So would, according to the policy as is written today, would that preclude folks from playing on the turf while allowing them to play on the grass?
I hesitate, because that would mean that either myself or the athletic trainer would have to make that decision. I don't know if the coach is going to know the difference of the temperature. The coach doesn't have the gauge in hand. So since the coach isn't on the grass, I don't know if they're going to know that difference.
So could I jump in here? I like the idea of a protocol for grass and a protocol for turf. And maybe you and I can look at that, Steve.
Sure.
And to take those things into account, Amanda, that you're talking about.
Okay.
I was surprised when we had the data at last month's board meeting, I think, at how warm the grass fields get.
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't, I don't know.
I measured the grass the same days that I measured the turf.
Yeah.
They were very hot.
Yeah. But I think that, I think it would be good for us to look at the two as separate.
The only concern that I would have, so we're going back to now either myself or an athletic trainer taking measurements, and I don't want those to be taken into question. And there's the, oh, I'm going to get it wrong, the WEB bulb?
Yes.
Yeah.
I read about that in the Corey Stringer website.
Globe temperature.
Yes. So we would, if we really wanted to be, you know, right on, specific with, you know, what the humidity was, what the heat index was on the turf, we would have to buy one of those to take the measurements, you know?
No, that's not what I'm suggesting at all. And I'm not, I'm actually not suggesting even that it would rely on you or the athletic trainer. I think that with the data that we have and the information that we have about temperature and heat index, that we can make some guidelines, so that when you get the data from Weatherbug, that we look at the data in terms of the grass fields, and we look at the data in terms of the turf fields. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. And just to kind of put a final thought in the comments, it is very important to stress that our coaches, their first thought in everybody's, in their minds, is the care and safety of those kids. They're, you know, whether you're talking about, you know, a football coach to a, you know, field hockey coach, it doesn't matter. They've all given me the impression that that's all they care about. It's not about, you know, "We got to get a practice in before our first game," or "We can't miss this practice because it's going to affect how we play." They were always concerned about the kids, so.
I don't doubt that.
No, I didn't doubt that at all.
No, not for a moment. I think that one of the things that I've learned is, the more explicit we can be about protocol, the less chance there is for interpretation. So yes, I think our coaches did a remarkable job and do a remarkable job with the kids. But I was wishing that we had some sort of a protocol to determine if we come to school or not. So I think that whether or not we're playing, you know, how we're playing and where we're playing, just the more explicit we can be, the better. And we can involve them in talking about how to do it and what it should look like, but I think it would be important.
Okay.
Steve, I just have a quick question on our synthetic fill, whatever appropriate words. Our field is kind of cooling technology.
It do.
Right?
Yes. So it's cool fill, correct. So it's supposed to keep the temperature down. That's what it's designed to do. I don't know the technology behind that, but I did.
That's why we went with the more expensive one.
Correct.
Right.
So, and I did reach out to SprintTurf, and they reiterated that, you know, that was the design of it, that was what it's supposed to do. So I guess it could have been hotter if it wasn't the cool fill.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Thank you.
So in terms of the protocol, let's, my recommendation would be that we set this one aside and get the other one, and then we look at the two side by side. Okay? Is that okay with everyone?
Sure.
Okay. School opening, I just wanted to let the board know, I think I've written this to you, but other than the oppressive heat, it really was a very smooth opening. The second day of school, Melinda and I were at the high school and middle school for dismissal, and the buses were leaving the yard at 2:10, which is just remarkable.
Yeah.
And
And then we were at Green Acres.
And then we were at Green Acres, and we were at Montwies. And, I mean, the first day there were, certainly didn't, was not flawless, but it was probably the best I've ever seen. So, and I'll tell you, I am really impressed with bus drivers. They are, they are good people. And they know their kids also.
Yeah.
That was very apparent, as we listened to them when the kids were getting off the bus. And the building principals reported to me, Melinda and I kept in touch with the principals throughout. We were at the schools, and they reported a smooth opening pretty much across the board. Okay. Any questions about the opening? I forgot to take the papers off the corner. Oh, yeah, would you, thank you. I want you to have something as I talk about Sback very, very quickly. Sback is the Smarter Balanced Assessment, which is our state test, our state assessment.
For students in grade three through eight.
Yes. And so Melinda and I will kind of, what do they call that? Piggyback off one or another.
Walk it through this?
Yeah. Yeah. We won't spend a lot of time on this, but I think there are some things that I just want to point out to you that I think are important. Number one, if you look at our demographic, demographic reference group, which is the group of towns in Connecticut that the State Department has determined most reflect North Haven, are most similar. So if we're going to compare North Haven with other places, we compare it with these towns. In terms, there are 23 of them. We ranked number five both in language arts and in math.
And that's from the district perspective?
From the district perspective.
And there's other places where, you know, we're even higher when you break off by like a grade level.
Right. So that's an average of three through eight.
Right.
But I think, you know, salutations to our teachers, because they have worked really hard on this. So then I gave you just some supporting documentation. By each grade, I gave you data from their, the last year, 2017, and then compared it with this year, 2018. As you're going through it, there are two goals that I want you to keep in mind. You know, I always have those essential district goals that we look at all the time. And there are two of those that are really critical in terms of Sback, or that Sback gives us information on. One is that whole idea of 85% of our kids performing at or above goal. I realize that that is extremely high. But I think we've got to have something to stretch and reach for. And so, so then I tried to break it down incrementally. So if you look at the third goal, it's really looking at 70% of our students performing at or above, so that we can incrementally get to 85 each year. And I've highlighted the places where we're there, and you can see from those, some of the other places, we are just about there. So, you know, as you look at the data, I think that what I see is some, is continuous improvement. Let me just highlight a couple of things. So in third grade, we met the goal of having 70% of the students achieving at level three or greater in math, with 76% of the students achieving goal. In fourth grade, 68% of the students met goal in math. In fifth grade, that number drops to 64, and then to 16 in grade six. Seven and eight achieved 55 and 58 respectively. We're drilling down into seven and eight to find out why those scores are not as strong as the others. The math test across the state was far more difficult for kids.
And just to give like a point of reference, you can see our DURG information, but I'll just give you math, for example, from the district perspective. The state average is 46.7% of students at levels three and above, and we're at 63.2. So we're outperforming, you know, most of the state in that respect.
Can I ask a quick question, just format-wise? For, if we're looking at grade three for, okay, so let's, if I'm looking at, let me go to, all right. Do I look at grade three, 2017, district 68%? Are those the 2018 grade four kids?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So you've got to go sort of from the 2017 and the following page to 2018.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm trying to track a cohort to see, because that's, I think, a better indicator sometimes if you
Oh, absolutely.
So I could kind of just speak to that piece a little bit. The other bit of data that we get from the state now is the growth target information, and that's actually really meaningful, because it breaks down global growth, how much, you know, like a particular district, school, or grade gained. But then we also get it by individual student. And we saw really nice gains, I think, everywhere except just in one area around that. And I'll give you just an example of it, because that shows us that even if, in places where kids are not performing at goal, they're making the target for themselves. So that child is growing in his or her learning, and that's really a good step. Montwies is a place that we put a lot of focus last year. And in language arts, on our average percent of the target achieved, we moved from 46.6% to 73%. And then on the individual growth rate in that same group, we were at 23.5% the year before, and we moved to 47%. So we're seeing some really nice gains there.
Can I ask about Green Acres score? Because the language arts, could you please refresh my memory about the EL students? When do they start? Because when you think that you have, what is it, 45 EL kids? I mean, that could really impact.
Oh.
And I'm impressed with the
We're seeing great, great gains actually with our EL learners. We'll get that data too, in terms of students making their gains. But we can run a report, and I did look at it the other day, I don't know what it's out on my head doc, but some really nice growth.
But do they take the, is it, do they have to be here a year?
It depends, right, exactly.
I mean, when you look at 85% in
And we get measures on them for their lost links.
In grade four, I mean, that's, I mean, that's
We've dismissed many of our students across the district, but Green Acres in particular. Very solid.
Our kids are really doing well.
Do they have to pass the lost links to take the Sback? It doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter. You could be, if you could be a non-English speaker in terms of the, you know, the lost link assessment.
Is there an option to take in their native language?
Uh, no. There are some embedded supports that, you know, anybody can kind of access.
Yeah, but those are sometimes tricky. You don't know where to find them.
Right, exactly. And there's some dictionary pieces, but some of that's not helpful.
Yeah.
You know, we try to, we try to put as many accommodations as are appropriate for students that will be useful to them.
Jen, you know, to your point, the fifth grade cohort
Yep.
Showed a 4% increase in the number of students achieving goal in language arts when comparing the results as fourth graders.
Yes, yep.
There was a 5% increase in the number of fourth graders achieving goal or higher when we compared that with their third grade performance.
Great.
3% of more students in sixth grade achieved goal or better than the results of that same group in fifth grade. So one of the things that we're seeing, I think, is we are making this incremental progress, and it's holding. We're not, we don't lose it, it seems we get it and we maintain it and sustain it. So we'll be talking about this with you for a long time, giving you some information. But I just wanted you to have a sense of where things currently stand. And there's always room for improvement, don't get me wrong, but
Can I be very honest with you? I mean, I like the report, but when I turned to the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and I saw teachers' names with a percentage, that really bothers me. For a couple of reasons. One, you don't know the composite of the classroom. And as a specialized teacher, very often, I had one teacher that I would send all my kids to.
Oh, right.
And if they, you know, if they have a third of their class
Right.
With special needs, they're going to, chances are, they're going to have depressed scores.
So there should be a quality.
You know, I know there's one teacher listed here, he was transferred, what, in May, in March?
Mm-hmm.
And you know what? Is that fair to have a, you know, have a score, you know, when you've been too much?
Yeah, those shouldn't
Yeah, we know that as professionals, but sometimes folks who wouldn't know, wouldn't realize, sometimes people assume that that's a reflection on the quality of the teaching, and we know that that's not to be the case.
Right.
But, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for that. I will make sure that changes.
They may refuse to call them teacher A, B, and C.
Yeah, I don't think we, I really, my purpose in giving you this information tonight was the total group. So that was something I had done as I was working, and
Well, I know it's a draft, so
Yeah, it's a point well taken.
Thank you.
So any questions on our testing?
I do have one question.
Yep.
So for math, I know we said that we think
So for math, I know we said that we think that it was a substantially harder test this year, maybe. Were other folks in our district in terms of scripts, they have similar results to ours with, you know, slight decrease or improvement? It looks like not in all, like in fifth graders killed it in math.
Yeah, right. I was gonna say, it's not...
Right.
Exactly. I mean, you can see, I think it's in... Is it math that we're... Yeah, and with math, we're in that fifth spot, and we're actually tied with three districts in our DURG there in our overall.
Okay.
So we're very... When I talk to other districts, we're seeing many of the same things in terms of our scores, particularly in math. I was worried about the math ones when I first got them, because you don't have a point of reference.
Right.
You don't know, you can only compare it to the year before. And one of the coordinators happened to be at a workshop and was with Southington, and they were like, "Oh, math was terrible." So I was like getting the feel from other places that, you know, there was some change there.
Do we have the prior year math scores for our DURG that we can kind of...
Sure.
That I can see, just to get some context?
Sure. I think I may have them, but...
I think we had them last year too. We get these every year.
Are they online? Because I think that's...
Yes, it's all in the board.
Yeah, okay.
So you can look at other districts. It's all right there. You just toggle to the different year.
Perfect. Thanks.
The most telling thing for me in terms of the math was that not one district reached 70% of students. And that is... To me, that was telling.
Well, a big part of the math is that it's a significant amount of reading.
Mm-hmm.
That's right.
That's right.
It is an insane amount of reading for people that aren't familiar with the test. So even students that, you know, are having difficulty with the English language, they might be math wizards, but to know what you have to do, you have to read sometimes paragraphs of information.
And also the writing that's involved, because you have to explain how you...
You have to explain how you did it.
Yeah. A lot of kids, they could tell you, but to write it...
Or they could solve the problem and not tell you how you got there. And you know what? If we gave some of us math problems, you would be able to explain why you do what you do, you just do it.
Send them feedback. Right, Frank?
Thank you, yes.
Can we send them feedback on this? I'm the queen of unsolicited feedback, but like...
Send them?
Yeah, yeah. They do ask us for...
They do.
And interesting fact is, you know, they build these banks of questions, right? So that's through Smarter Balance. It's a big national consortium. Yes. But we've been really lucky because just through our work, you know, with the state and various things, Tracy Ramberg, our 612 coordinator, was selected to go this summer to Chicago to work on learning how to create some of the questions in the bank. And she said it was just an amazing experience, and she's like, you know, we're having conversations around how do they go about making these questions and what does that look like? And just last week, Sue Bass, our 612 coordinator, was selected for Language Arts. So we've been... And Patty White worked on the special ed side of the science assessment. So we've been really lucky to be able to have these opportunities because there are big commitments. I mean, our people are going to Chicago, they're going all over to be able to participate in this, but they can bring back that information and help us have a better understanding. So they do have a voice that way, and at the end of the assessments, they, you know, we give feedback. Mostly it's about the technical feedback. They're not always so open to what our feedback is on the questions. And we don't know. Every kid has a different set of questions, so it's not like it's one problem that we can say, "Okay, they're all struggling in this particular skill." It's not that clean anymore, so...
Any other questions on the testing?
No.
There will be more information to follow. I also included in your pack our strategic... Our district improvement plan for the year. It continues to be the same five goals: teaching and learning, the performance of the lower performing 25% of our students, culture, communication, and leadership. This is year three of the three-year strategic plan, which is actually quite timely, so that the new superintendent coming in will be able to work with the administrative team to look at district needs going forward.
You just raised a question in my mind, because when you're talking about the lower 25%, is the scoring still one, two, three, four?
Yes.
And I don't expect you to know this offhand, but at what point did... Did anybody move from a one to a two?
Oh, that's the growth target data.
Or a two to a three?
Yes. We get that information done.
So we have it broken by... The schools and the teachers can dig down right to the student to see how much growth they've made. So you may have stayed at a Level Two, but you may have made your anticipated growth that they set forth, which that's something to celebrate, you know?
Well, you could be... I'm sorry, you could be a two, and you would have made tremendous growth if you started at a beginning one.
Right, that's what they... That's the data that they give you, so you can see that.
But the other piece of that is you could be a four and be a four the next year, which is above goal, and not meet your growth target.
Mm-hmm.
So it's...
It's really interesting.
The calculation is interesting. So that is... Those are the goals we'll be focusing on this year. And I just... I asked Patrick just for, you know, sort of a brief update on the school resource officers. So I'll just run through that quickly. Currently, there are four resource officers in place. There's a full-time officer at the high school and the middle school. Montwais and Clintonville are splitting someone now, and Green Acres and Ridge Road are splitting someone now, though there are two people who have been hired and are simply being... Going through training. And there was something about being able to resign from the state. You have to do it on the first of the month or something. It was some ridiculous thing. But so the full-time SRO should be... We should have a full contingent by October 1st. I think that the final person will be coming in by October 1st. So the SRO daily routines is similar and across the board. They check the perimeter of the school throughout the day. They check the exterior doors to ensure that they're secure. They monitor the main entrance of every building throughout the day. They are present at arrival dismissal, and they make themselves available. They alternate. So they're... They may be at arrival in the morning and dismissal in the afternoon, you know, bus pickup or vice-versa parent pickup versus bus pickup. They just seem... My experience in visiting schools is that they just seem to have blended into the culture. I was at the middle school yesterday, and that resource officer was doing a really nice job interacting with kids and with parents, and I think that, you know, people have been really very happy. They wear black polo suits, so they're not wearing their uniform, and it does say "Police" on the back, and khaki pants. They did also all go to open house, or they are going to go. We haven't done all the open houses, but they either went or will go. So... And then you asked... Somebody asked about the school crisis team, and that was... Montwais talked about that as being something that he's engaged in. I'm sure the others do as well. So I think that all in all, it has been a very nice, very nice introduction.
I heard from Katie Russo today and Bridgette Impala from the middle school just on... They called about random other things, and in that conversation, all three of them said how pleased they are with the SROs and, you know, what an impact it's making.
Everything I've heard on the community has been positive.
Is that right? Good. Good. Yeah, they've... It's been a wonderful addition.
And thank you to Patrick.
That's everything I have. And thank you, Patrick, for the summary.
Melinda, your report?
No, mine just was with Dr. Cronin's in terms of the S-Back data.
Frank, anything you want to share tonight?
Just a few words. When I used to work on the municipal side, I always looked over at the Board of Ed, and I said, "Boy, summertime is so peaceful and quiet." Really, when you work for the Board of Education, there's so much that goes on, particularly in August. I think August has got to be close to one of the busiest months of the year. You're getting ready for school, you're trying to get supplies, you're trying to make arrangements for the buses, you're trying to take payroll, set up for the teachers coming in, for all the new staff, people coming in. There's a myriad of different things that go on. Then you get the bus complaints, and you have to go out and actually visit them. So when Dr. Cronin said the smooths opened up smoothly, that's very nice. You know, the bus company did a good job on it. Dr. Cronin was on top of a lot of things there, but there's, as they say, a variety of things that goes on. And specifically in the business office, it's one of the busiest times of the year because the business office has certain financial reports that the state requires. One's called the ED141, and one's called the ED001. One deals with how you spent every penny in state and federal grants, and the ED01 is how you spent every penny on education. And the ED01 is a very complex system with all these interrelated tables, and you have to put all the items in, and they're all interrelated, so it's like whack-a-mole. You make a mistake over here, and you correct it, it pops off on a different schedule, so it's fairly complex. And this year, the state converted over to another new system for this, an electronic system, and that further complicated the issue. But that being said, the point is that August is probably one of the busiest months of the year in a finance office. I started in August. I'll remember this for next time. I started in August and just trying to catch up on the institutional knowledge and the institutional history and the financial operations to... Then not only for all the reporting, but closing out the fiscal year, which is coming to the end now. And we have met with the town's finance director several times to make sure we're all in sync wrapping up. For the fiscal year 1819, you're in your... You already started the new fiscal year, so we're closing out the old fiscal year. You're in operations for the current fiscal year, and next month, we start next fiscal year. So there's three fiscal years at any one time that you're juggling numbers and watching toward. I did a cursory overview of your budget document, and as Brian reported, the finance committee have some suggestions for changes and make it a little easier document to read. And one of the things I picked up in looking at your budget document, I saw a lot of numbers. I didn't see educational data. Your report that you just handed out, I mean, this is the output for the numbers. And my recommendation to you is going to be, when you prepare your budget, put some of your educational data in there. This is what you're doing with the money that you're getting. And a budget is just not a document. It's a policy statement. It tells you what you're doing. It sets what the priorities are of a school district. And when you start to put educational data in and highlight some of the successes that you have, it really makes a difference to the average person reading it and what's, you know, we're giving all the Board of Education all this money, what are they doing with it? Toot your own horn. Include that as part of the...
You know, Frank, well, thank you for saying that, because as a Board of Education, sometimes I want to speak out here lately, we've been getting a lot of questions, a lot of things, not about education, but more about fields and temperature, which are just as important as safety as our kids. But I think sometimes people lose what we're here for, and to know that our test scores have come up the way they have, and then at budget season, we're asked so many different questions. So, but thank you for that, because you reminded... Just now, it reminded me, this is why we're here on this board.
Exactly. Exactly. And, you know, you focused about... And there's so many things that can be touched upon. Generally, we put a section there just on special education. What is special education? Because special education is the one element in the budget you do not have control over.
Right.
It's an 800-pound gorilla in the room that affects regular education, because you're required, you're mandated to do all the special education costs. And the state has a formula called excess cost, which is a fairly complex formula, but if you spend so much for a student, the state says, "We will reimburse you." Well, yes, they reimburse you, but it's not at 100%. And you have to spend $70,000 before the state even starts to think about reimbursing you. And then after that, you only get reimbursed 75% if you're lucky. And what happens is it impacts your budget directly. I just finished up working in another school district, and we ran a... We ran just an evening program on special education and excess costs. The room was jammed. Board of Alderman were there, Board of Education members were, the public was there. And because it helps identify these mandated costs and what you are stuck with that you have to do, and it affects your operations. So... But anyway, I'm going to have some more suggestions for Dr. Cronin on the budget and things I think it do that really market the Board of Ed and really all the things you're involved with. End of report.
Thank you so much, Frank.
Frank's been a tremendous help.
Can I just add something? I'm so glad to hear you speak, because one of the things I hear at budget time is, how come we're so... We have so many teachers and what... How many, you know, fewer students? Well, that data shows why our staffing levels are to the extent that they are, because we're getting the, you know...
Results for them.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any public comments on the... On our agenda tonight?
Hi. How you doing? My name is Brian Quinn. I'm a town resident for 51 years. I just want to thank Steve Blumenthal first off. My daughter plays on the field hockey team, and I can tell you, every time I come home after work and I ask her how practice was, she said, "Dad, I didn't go to practice yet. They moved it," which was refreshing to me, not knowing that she was out there running around in a 100-degree heat. So thank you, Steve. And every time I go to the field, whether it's practice or a game, I see Steve. So for all the people that think that Steve doesn't, you know, is not involved with the temperatures and the coaching and watching over all the players and the students that, especially our kids, he's always there. So thank you, Steve. Regarding your response about the air conditioning, if we took all the kids, including buses, and brought them all to the air-conditioned rooms of our leadership sometimes in North Haven, we would have air conditionings over there. That was a joke. Congratulations on your retirement. You're a real mess. You've done a lot of great work in North Haven, and I thank you for that. The other thing I have is about the kids. I'm in... I work in technology every day. So the one thing that you may be able to think about is if you... If the days are really, really hot, you could get a Cisco Webex and have the teacher be on there and the kid in the air conditioning room, and they have to log in, and you actually see them. And they can actually teach from their home. It's a simple web. Put all the students in or bring them to, you know, bring them to somewhere. I mean, it is horrific, and my kid went to Montwais. Listen, I like to run to go there. I just sweat it out over there. But it is horrific, and those kids shouldn't have to go through that. The other thing is that I wanted to ask Anita about was, you said consultant. You have to do a consultant for air conditioning. Why don't we just put... Why doesn't the town put an RFP out to the residents? We've got about 30 guys that do air conditioning and heating in this town. Have them... Ask them if they cut them a deal, then put their name on the school, on the plaque. I mean, we got to think outside the box all the stuff.
Yeah, I would like to do that with our town charter. We would have... For going out for something like that, I understand it to be a town charter. Believe me, I agree with you.
It's simple. I mean, anybody, they just go in there, put a proposal together, and they take the one that's with the best, and then if it makes sense, you go with it. I mean, hiring a consultant for $10,000 or $15,000, I think that's a little excessive.
I think we had consultants do our town charter.
Yeah, there you go. There you go. And one more thing. You said about special education, and it was the 800-pound gorilla. What's your... My... Your name? Mark?
Frank.
Frank! I happen to have a special education kid, so, so when you say 800-pound gorilla, kind of, so, just they won't reimburse you, so help me, help me with that, because I wasn't sure I took that comment right, but help me, help me understand that a little better.
Yes, the 800-pound gorilla is now dealing with the students, dealing with the cost, the overall cost that the local Board of Education has to absorb to provide mandated special education. And I use that term because all the education that the Board of Education provides, special education is one that, if a purchase order comes across my desk for $100,000 that puts their budget over budget, you have to say yes, because you're mandated. And so at the end of the year, special education files a report called a CDAP report, and we have to file with the state, each student that's a high-cost student. So we have, your threshold is roughly $70,000 you have to spend before you get one penny of reimbursement. If you spend $150,000 on one student, and we have students that are hitting that easily and above, if you spend $150,000 on one student, the Board of Ed's budget has to eat the first $70,000. The additional $80,000, the state says we're going to reimburse you under excess cost, it's not, you don't get the $80,000 back, you get 75 percent of the $80,000. If you have 10 students, however, that hit the $70,000 threshold, the Board of Ed has to spend $700,000 without a single penny of reimbursement. And the special ed formula is based on, what is the cost to educate one child in North Haven? You multiply that number by 4.5 to give you, when does the state start to look at you for reimbursement?
So who do we got to beat up in Hartford about that?
Well...
Because, because I know we're talking about spending, but, you know, special education kids are one, are some of the kids that have the problems that we face today, that we have officers in our schools. And sometimes I think that that gets lost in the shop, oh, when we talk about, you know, dollars and cents. I mean, most of those kids are very bright, very, very smart. I mean, they're outgoing, and, you know, they have problems.
One question.
And, and one question I have before I go is, is how many school psychologists do we have?
We have a school psychologist in every building.
Every building?
And we have two at the high school.
Okay. No, I just wanted to better understand that, because, you know, I know the state, and I know it's, and I looked at the budget, it was like $2 million last year for odd services. That's huge.
It is big. Tuition and transportation are very big. And your special ed director has been a yeoman's job of bringing a lot of our district students back into the district, dramatically reducing the Board of Education's special ed expenditures over the years. But it is still that 800-pound gorilla there sitting there that's sitting on your budget and saying, "Feed me first."
So it's four point, what, you said, four times the...
Four point five.
Okay. I appreciate that.
If you want more information, I...
No, I just wanted to better understand that, because I think that, you know, listen, the $2 million, if you had the $2 million, maybe you would have been, you know, plus for the year instead of a deficit.
Absolutely, absolutely, don't worry.
I appreciate it, and good luck to you, and I'll see you before I go.
You sure will.
Thank you, Brian.
May I just add something about the special ed costs? I mean, one of the things is unpredictable is, you don't know when a student with special needs is moving into your district. And I know a lot of the, the heavy-duty costs have to do with the medically fragile student who needs nursing and all kinds of care. So you can do so much planning, but in August, there's usually one or two surprises that you can't plan for.
Right. That's right.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Mary?
Amelia White, Summer Lane. So the first thing I want to talk about briefly is about the turf field. I also want to thank Steve for, you know, all that he did to, you know, monitor the situation and make sure that none of the athletes, you know, became dehydrated or were sick or injured, so really, really appreciate that, that's just awesome to hear. I wanted to say that I agree with Dr. Cronin that the protocols should be separate for turf and grass. I think that would make everybody feel a little bit better. I wanted to ask if any turf temperatures were taken, when the turf field temperatures were taken, when the air temperature was, you know, very high, and was when the heat wave was occurring.
Steve, you did those. Yes, yes, they, we had them.
I don't remember the specific dates, but the week Labor Day, so September 4th, the, at 3:40 PM, the turf was 122, and the grass was about 198, it was still hot. On, that would, actually, that was at 3:40, at 6 o'clock, I measured both, it was actually interesting, the west field, which is closer to the high school, was 98, and the east was at 105. And then on September 5th, which was...
Wednesday?
That was, that was very hot at 3:30, it was about 133.
Oh, God. That was, that day was really, really hot.
So...
Thank you, Steve. I think that...
All right, thanks.
And I, Mary, I just want to say that we are taking the temperature, so when you ask this kind of question, to me, we are taking the temperature. Steve is taking a record of it, part of his job responsibilities and part of what we as a board had agreed on. So know that that's going to be done.
So that is still occurring?
Yeah, absolutely, Mary, we're not...
Okay, great. Just wanted to double check. Let's see. So the next thing I wanted to ask is for Goldie. Can you tell us, I did watch part of, but not all of, the last middle school building committee meeting, and there was quite a discussion about the gym floor, and what's causing it, can it be fixed? And, correct me if I'm wrong, but did the committee vote to either have it analyzed or to have some, something take place to repair it?
I think it was to further look at it, because the cost, I think, was over $100,000. I'm trying to remember the report that I gave at our last BOE meeting, because they had several contractors look at it, or they had a contractor look at it before the whole renovation, and they said with just a little bit of touch-up and everything that it was fine. But right now, it's not a safety issue, you know, it's more of an aesthetic issue. So the question is, okay, what can be done about it? Is it worth the money? Is the money available to actually replace the whole thing? So that's the, the question that is at hand, but no firm decision has been made on, because I don't even know if we have the money to even make the replacement. And then, you know, so I'm not really sure if that's going to happen, but right now is just to take a look at it and, and see what the options are.
Okay, so that kind of rolls into my next question was, so does the committee have any idea if there will be any money left over as far as to get maybe an item off the alternate list, like the track? Is there any, like, you know, clue as to if there's going to be any money?
From my understanding, so we, I think the last balance that the, the last balance that the consultant mentioned was probably about, about two, between $200,000 and $300,000, I think, was the current balance. I'm like, I have to go check my notes, that's the current balance, but things are still in flux, you know, there are bills that need to be paid, there's money that needs to be returned from the, from Gilbane and things like that, so everything is still in flux. We haven't even talked about the alternate list yet.
Okay.
You know, so they may be a possibility, they may not be a possibility, depends on what, what is at hand. So my thought is, well, we pretty much have a firm number as to what the balance is, then so look at the list, prioritize the list, figure out what we can and cannot do, and then move, move forward.
Okay, because I, we hear every once in a while that pretty soon the committee is no longer going to be meeting, so...
I haven't heard that.
Oh, yeah, you haven't heard that? Okay.
No, because the thing is, even if, even though the project, even if the project has ended per se, like there's no one out on site, there are still bills that need to be paid, there's a close-out process that may take actually a year after the...
Okay.
Final construction has ended. So my assumption is that we'll continue to meet until next year, though not as regularly, but we'll continue to meet. And there's several outstanding issues too that are still out there.
Okay, all right, thanks. So my next question is for Frank. So I attended the board, no, I did not attend it, I saw part of it on TV, the Board of Finance meeting, and the chair was talking about, or the subject of the Board of Education's budget came up, and they were talking about an $11,000 surplus. So I was just wondering, is that correct? Does anybody know anything about that? You're saying yes?
I'm saying that that was, that was the number that was given to us by the Director of Finance on June 30th. That, that, I think that, and sort of like the building committee and those finances, that moves as we close out the year. But, yes, that was the number that was cited for me.
So am I correct, Dr. Cronin, so we have that number of $11,000, but that doesn't include that we have an open invoice for...
Correct.
$500 or another open invoice for $2,000, that's correct?
That's pretty darn close, though. Nice job with the budget then, because it's very close.
Well, that was, that was at that stage, I think that...
That day, that day, but still.
20 minutes.
So that's right, so it could change, is what you're saying?
It could change.
All right. But it wouldn't go where you're in the minus, you don't think?
Mary, I have, I have made business managers swear on their life that they will never put me in that position, so Frank is, no.
Okay. So another question I have about the budget is, was there a separate line item created in the budget for turf field replacement savings? There was discussion about it, I just was wondering, did it take place?
I think it's, we're talking about next, in our budget, that we'll begin working on in October.
The future budget.
Yeah.
That that will be a line item, okay. So my next question is, do we have any idea, not an exact figure, but approximately how much money has been generated so far from the turf field rentals?
I don't know that number. I would be happy to try to get that for you.
Okay, great.
I don't want to just miss a beat.
And just to double check, the annual maintenance contract with SprintTurf, was that $10,000 or $12,000?
Between $10,000 and $12,000, I can't remember, between $10,000 and $12,000.
Between $10,000 and $12,000, okay, just curious about that. Okay, so I have been, obviously, an advocate for the public's health and safety, and some of you might have even heard me speak at nauseam about the need for firemen, paramedics in this town. But also, you might have heard me speak about the need to save for the replacement of these turf fields. So with that being said, I did attend the last Board of Selectmen meeting, and I did ask the First Selectmen, I did ask him, what was the budget surplus? Because I had heard that there was a budget surplus. And he stated that the net budget surplus was $367,000. Of that $367,000, $226,000 will be taken out for the SROs, okay? So that leaves $141,000. So we, you might, you might not know, but $140,000 was set aside in the budget as a separate line item to, you know, do something maybe with the fire department, we don't know, there's a committee, and, and so it's, it's there. So what I proposed was, if you were to take that difference between the surplus, the cost of the SROs, okay, and you do have that $141,000, and if they were to take the $140,000 set aside in the budget and put those together, you have $281,000. And I understand they said that the budget is closed and you can't do anything, so what I'm, I'm going to go to the Board of Finance meeting, I'm going to make this suggestion, I don't know what's going to happen, but, so anyway, you add those two numbers, it's $281,000. So the cost for two firemen, paramedics is $250,000. So I'm just going to say, suggest to them that they put this money, they add that money to the $110,000, to the $140,000 for $250,000, and you save that, so you have that for the next budget. So we know we're going to be able to hire two firemen, paramedics, but that leaves $31,000. So I'm going to advocate, just to let you all know, I'm going to advocate that we save that money, okay, for the future, for the turf field replacement, because during that meeting, the First Selectmen talked about, you know, we are not going to bond for assets that depreciate very quickly. So he was referring to fire trucks, and so I took that and applied it to the turf, turf fields, because every year, they're being used, and that's a way of they're being depreciated, they're getting used. So anyway, so I'm going to advocate that this money be put separate, you know, in a, in a line item where we're saving for it. So, because I, I said to them, what's going to happen is, if we do nothing, and we could have in eight years when the warranty expires, we could not be ready to replace them. Maybe they'll, they'll go nine years, maybe they'll go 10 years, and that'd be great. But we need to be ready, and so to do nothing, I think is fiscally, you know, not responsible. So anyway, so that's what I'm going to do, and I wanted to let you guys know. So I'm trying to get firemen, paramedics hired, and trying to get them to do lease-to-purchase for another fire truck, and I did ask the First Selectmen if he would, you know, if he thought that the Board of Finance would be willing to, you know, do that in this upcoming budget, and he said, "Possibly." So I'm working, I'm working, I'm trying, just want to let you guys know.
Thank you.
And, oh, and my last question is, do we, so the student IDs began this, with this school season, how, how are the eighth graders adjusting to it?
Well, the eighth graders were actually, were waiting for their pictures to come in.
Okay.
And though, I, they have spoken with them about it, and they've spoken with them about it in terms of, this is what you need to do in preparation for the high school, and I think that they're taking it very seriously.
Oh, good.
So next month, I'll be able to tell you specifically, because they'll be wearing them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Okay. Anita, before we close, you talked to me in my office, and last month, you mentioned about the October date. Yes. So I, we changed the October date, do you remember what I said it was?
Is it the following week?
That's what I was going to say. The Tuesday, right? So, because I'm away on the 11th.
Right.
I don't have a calendar, and we changed it to the Tuesday, the following week.
Then that's the 16th.
The 16th.
I knew we talked about it, and then we couldn't, and then you and I talked about it today, and just thought we should clarify that.
So it's Tuesday, October 16th.
Yeah, thank you, I know you need to talk about that, because I won't be here on the 11th. Okay. Thank you. Also too, one quick, before we go to executive session, just want to read a little note from Rachel. She writes, "Dear Board of Education, thank you so much for your generous and thoughtful graduation gift. It means a lot to me, and I'm sure will help in preparing for college. It was an honor to be the Class of 2018 representative, and thank you again for supporting my endeavors in high school and going forward for college. Best of luck to all of you in this upcoming school year." From Rachel.
Oh, nice.
Tim, do you know where she went to school? I forget. Northeastern. Northeastern, that's right.
We'll be after you, too. If she was to go to school, we'll be like, "Well, what have you heard from, what have you done?"
Yeah, your application's ready, how about the essays? We'll keep on you.
May I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss matters pertaining personnel?
Yep, check in.
All in favor? I'm just going to second, we take like three minutes. May I have a motion...
So moved.
To approve the appointment of Jason Lathrup as a Director of Finance Operations and Human Resources at the North Haven Public Schools.
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
So what else is going on? I think we don't have more to talk about, it's a late night. So thank you, the meeting is adjourned, and we'll see you all next month.
All right.